Self-preservation. Sherry Baron has a little token of appreciation for your wife.
Oh.
For all you did for our kids over the weekend, which we definitely appreciate. We really do appreciate all you gave, Rick, but your wife probably wanted to see you a little.
You want to say that, Mrs. Barrick? Come on, you can do that, that's all right. She said since I didn't. Of course, I'm going to have to thank you so much.
That was Sherry. You gave a lot of time to our district.
You did.
And you have, for many months now, with academic events and athletic events that you've been attending, and certainly this last weekend, I think Mrs. Madeiras deserves it.
She'll love that. So when I walk in the door, just so you know, I'm going to have to preface it because otherwise she's going to ask, "What's the story behind this?"
What did you do?
That was not the intention. That was not wrong.
What did you do wrong?
You just dropped the jaw.
We appreciate everything you do.
I really appreciate it. I had a great time a couple of nights.
And now you have some, you had the great photographs, and we thank you for sharing those, but that's a beautiful, I think she'll like those.
Oh, she will. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Spouses, all of our spouses deserve something really for all the time that's been spent.
I'm not bringing flowers down.
Yeah, I like the decent price.
Tom does have the clicker to himself.
Just saying.
True.
Thank you.
Clicker independence. So other than Lakeham, nobody else appears to be recording the meeting. Would everyone now join me, please, in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, perfect. Absolutely perfect. Any public participation? No. First item, then item four, acceptance of the minutes from March 7.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you. It's a motion for Mrs. Gump to have a second.
Second.
And a second for Mrs. Baron. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We have a solo performance here.
We have a solo performer, but he just found out.
And unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but I am taking the reading on my hands. In recent development, S.R. Barlow-Mu and Mrs. Solomon hosted the Audible Judge Wright and Assistant Chief of Probation, John Garvey, as part of Massachusetts Educational Collaborative with the court system. They gave informational presentations to the members of the law enforcement internship as well as students taking the criminal law course. BONCO hosted our annual Bristol Community College On the Spot Edition today. Over 30 of our senior students met with an admissions counselor and were accepted on the spot. We're opening another session that will be taking place on March 29. On March 22, ARHS hosted the 2019 College of Mission Seminar for Grade 11 Parents. At the presentation, the Massachusetts Educational Financing Authority represented and provided information on college admissions, financial aid, and how to operate the Common Application. In response to recent national and local concerns for school safety, ARHS hosted a School Safety Awareness Day. Students were welcomed in their academic lab periods to visit the school library and participate in constructive activities such as they can participate in the safety forum and discussion with the administration, they can register to vote, write letters to the peers at Stolen Douglas High School, and share ideas, express concerns, and pose questions to local politicians. Ten of our student council students attended the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's annual spring conference in Hyannis, where the theme of the conference was experimenting with leadership. The students kicked off the conference by participating in the annual polar plunge that raised over $37,000 for the Special Olympics. The student leaders participated in various workshops and seminars in order to bring back strong leadership skills and tools to improve our school community. I'd like to congratulate the 16 students that qualified to attend DECA's International Conference in Atlanta in April. Over 40 awards were given out to the upon-visit students at the state-level competition. We would like to thank upon-visit student Fiona Conway along with Mrs. Mueller, Mrs. Cabral, The Healthy Living, and the host of students for the help in hosting the Red Cross Blood Run. Recently, the Advanced Placement Studio Art students participated in an art exhibit at the Great Hans Gallery in the Lakeville Public Library. The exhibit may be viewed through March 30 during the library's regular hours. We are happy to announce that the musical Annie will be performed at ARHS on April 5th, 6th, and 7th at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are available at the door for a $10 general admission charge. Special thanks to Mrs. Lithicott, Mr. Ledwith, and Mrs. Rimby for directing the performance. Thanks to Mrs. Rimby and her summer externship at Raytheon, students taking chemistry and engineering were treated to a full day of presentations from experts in chemistry, engineering, physics, and other sciences. The spring parent guardian night that occurred last week was a great success. There were over 370 conferences held throughout the night. And with the end of winter athletics, here's how the seasons went. Ice hockey went 10, 9, and 1, and won the Prenne Cup for the first time. Indoor track, the girls went 9 and 0, and the boys went 7, 1, and 1. Swim had a great season, and they participated in sectional and state-level meets. Wrestling had a great first season with their collaboration with Middleboro, and had great successes with, Jaden Astrada became a state, becoming a state champion in his weight class. And basketball, girls went 17 and 5, boys went 22 and 1, and both teams making it to the state-level competition.
Nice summary.
That is all.
Thank you. That is all.
Very busy.
Yes, yes. So thank you for consistently keeping us up to date. I had, I'll go ahead.
And Roberts, as he's not here, was one of those award winners at the DECA conference.
Yes, he was.
So he's one of the...
He's going to nationals. Yeah, he's great.
That's fantastic. Yeah, pretty good showing all around. You don't have to linger if you don't want.
Yeah, I have some more.
I had a feeling you might. In my zeal to get through things quickly, I overlooked some.
No, that's it.
Thank you for bringing them to my attention. We have some executive session, and it's also going to be to approve.
I will make a motion to approve those minutes with Mr. Owen's caveat of holding on to them until...
Yep. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Actually, Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, so now we're into old business.
Yeah, so a couple of brief updates. Class size, I provided you the enrollment numbers on March 5, so I didn't provide you an additional item. I'll do that on a monthly basis as we roll into June. What's interesting in those numbers is even from month to month, and months that you think there wouldn't be any changes, there was some significant shifts in our population for a variety of, I think, family reasons as it relates. But I'll continue to keep the group updated, probably with a, not the April 4th, but the April 25th meeting. We have our budget here.
Okay.
As far as staffing, the only posting position that we currently have on our website is for a part-time custodian as a result of resignation. That's the only posting currently, and we have not made a determination on posting for 18, 19 yet. Typically like to try to get a little bit further along in the budget process. I can tell you my principals want to get those postings out, but obviously there are budget implications as it relates, so I'll probably try to start that in April, start to get those postings. And obviously, it's always contingent when you start in April, in May, on the budgets being approved. But that's kind of the timeframe. And as far as transportation or busing, the update is that Mr. Owen has been invited to a meeting with Mr. Rosendies and first student on this Wednesday to hopefully finalize our 2018-19 direction as it relates to bus routes, timeliness in getting that information out, and some additional information. So I would think that if not our April 4th, certainly our April 25th meeting, we'll have an update. We have a meeting at 11 o'clock on Wednesday for transportation.
Good. Then we have the statement of interest for Esteban.
We finished the report. We've updated it. We will mail it in, we'll send it electronically tomorrow morning, so we just need you to sign the piece tonight, and then we'll go with it.
I heard that it went okay. You attended the meeting.
They are. Yeah, well, that's what they're signing.
It passed.
Well, it passed, but it wasn't unanimous with the Board of Selectmen. That's what I heard. I mean, the school committee, it was a unanimous vote forward. Board of Selectmen was not. I don't know what that, how that helps or hurts us at the state level.
I mean, as long as both boards have support, obviously this board's already taken formal action.
Right.
We have the Board of Selectmen, the signature, we'll electronically send that up, so.
That's our second attempt.
And I would like to thank Fred for coming out and for all your, all your help, all your prep work, and just your patience in answering questions. Yeah.
Thank you.
Enough said, huh?
Good job.
District security update.
I don't have any specific updates. I'm kind of in a standing position in light of kind of the circumstances. Met with the police chiefs, and I think I referenced that at the last school committee meeting, in addition to the site visit to FES. We're looking at some additional upgrades at FES. FES, for Free Town Residents, happened to be the kind of the first school that put camera in.
It's true.
So the good news is they were kind of the lead, but when you're the lead, you often have now the most antiquated cameras and technology and obsolete. So we're in the process now of getting some quotes and hopefully be able to do some upgrades this summer in relation to the security system over there, in relation to cameras and the TV screen, even if you went into the office, those types of things. Had a great relationship with both Lakeville Police and Free Town Police. In fact, I think as a result of this, I've had more dialogue with both police chiefs in the last few weeks in relation to some additional training and some things that are happening. So I feel very positive that we're taking a real, we continue to take a real proactive approach.
Yeah, and that's the key. I think we all have said that, you know, this needs to be ongoing, not knee-jerk, and so I appreciate you being out in front of it.
Any residents in either town that share some concerns, whether it be through media attention nationally or statewide, especially in light of, you know, the marches and things that have happened, and I would simply direct school board members to send those emails, phone calls, texts my way, and I'll certainly be able to communicate to both police chiefs. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So budget progress reports.
So I'm going to turn to Mr. Baker. Before I do that, I should add, and we didn't technically...
No, my bad.
Kind of welcome our new Director of Finance, and she came a little bit early, Ashley Lopes is here. She met with me for a little while, about 3:30, a quarter past this afternoon, and it's been a couple of hours, and it's part of the process, and I found it real helpful when I came on board in the district. So we put her right up here on the front table, and certainly feel free to ask her any questions or items or opinion along the way. Fred's going to give the update on 18 and 19, but Ashley, we welcome you.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. Try to be on our best behavior.
Of course we will.
Fiscal 18, it continues to be tight. The areas that we're having difficulty with facilities, we've got a number of motors wear out, we've got a number of pipes break, leaks. The damage that I'll talk to you about in the report later, we filed an insurance claim on that, and we probably will get reimbursed for almost all of that. We have met with the adjuster. So facilities is one area. The other area is legal. We've had some significant special ed cases that have taken a fair amount of the attorney's time. We have had some regular ed cases, more than usual, and we have had the collective bargaining, which has taken time. So between those three areas, we're up substantially versus our budget and legal. So those are the two main areas. A lot of other areas are very, very close. On the fiscal 19, we are going to be looking at making some adjustments before we present the budget on April 4. As you probably know, the budget presently carries a half percent increase for the staff. It's clear to us that it's going to be more than that. We need to update the budget to reflect that, so we will proceed to do that. You know, for the most part, the rest of the budget, I think, is falling in line, but we do need to update it. The piece I should have mentioned on the first part and didn't, going back to 18, is it may well be that we will have to dip into the very small amount of E and D that we have. I mean, we're not sure that we will, it's just that so much is running tight, and we have a few areas over, we certainly run that risk. I can obviously report to you, and I know something more definitive, but at this point, there's some reasonable chance we'll need to use some of that.
Okay, questions?
So on 19, if I may, I just want to make clarification. Obviously, we're presenting our public hearing next Wednesday. I'll present the budget assessment sheet and go through some details. As Fred alluded to, we'll kind of make some internal adjustments. And if it be at this time, I simply would ask if there are any parameters or anything that this committee would like to see differently in presentation. We don't intend, at least it is not our intent, to dramatically change the bottom line assessment piece. We may have to make some adjustments within, to kind of address salaries and/or other items that may come up, and Fred and I are prepared to do that. If there are any other major adjustments, I know there's been some conversations regarding a couple of the areas, it would be helpful to know that tonight, obviously, so we can make that adjustment necessary prior to the meeting next Wednesday. So I'm not suggesting it has to be done, I'm just saying now would be the time, so we can at least prepare for that before we roll out the public hearing.
Be hopeful, so have a better concept of what people will be looking at for a number.
To do that. Well, part of, and Fred, you know, made, alluded to that, we may want, we have an executive session tonight as it relates specifically to negotiations, so we really probably need to refrain from details behind that. For my advice, I simply want the group to be aware that there are some, obviously some things in play right now that may ultimately impact that, that we can't go into too much detail as it relates to that, but that will impact, and I'll be able to go into a little bit more detail later tonight.
All right.
Specific to that, I think.
Mr. Owen.
Derek.
Mr. Gray.
I got a few things, so I'll let you go, Steve.
18, where are we thinking, where is your concern that we may need to pull from E and D?
Where to pull it from?
Where are you thinking that we're going to be short, that we would need to pull from E and D?
Well, we are clearly short in the legal account, and we are clearly short in facilities. The question, though, you know, before we go to E and D, and hopefully won't have to, is can we find that someplace else in the budget, and can we cover it with something else? So we're, you know, we're looking and projecting the accounts out to the end, to the degree we can, and obviously, our preference would be to cover it from someplace.
Okay.
We have frozen expenditures, understanding that there are some things you can't freeze. I mean, there are certain things that we have to have, and certain things we have to do. Discretionary things, whether they be facilities or anything else, will get pushed out to July 1. So I'm not telling you at this point, we can't solve the problem, but it really, there is some risk that we will have to go to E and D.
Derek.
As a reminder, my vote needs to move some items.
Yeah, we'll work that out.
You need to...
I'll have that for you.
Yeah. Also with that number, though, I'd like to go back to what I suggested last meeting and what the implications would be in removing school choice out of that formula. Myself, I still want to move in that direction. I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee, particularly where we see how uncomfortable this E and D discussion is. So I'd like to see what that number looks like without the items that I can't partake in.
All right. Let me just, I just want to get to a number on the E and D because...
It should be 375 out of school choice, right?
That's right.
Yeah, essentially, if we, if we don't use the E and D receipts, I'm sorry, if we don't use the choice receipts, you know, we're then 375 short on the budget, which would mean we'd have to have one or two choices. Either we'd have to raise the budget, or we'd have to decrease it and find places to take it.
Well, yeah, I'm under the assumption that we're going to raise the budget, and it's going to be assessed to the towns. That's my assumption.
Okay.
So at this point, Derek, and I'm not refuting that, you've made that position. It's not my intent to present the superintendent's budget in the budget hearing for next week, minus that amount. Ultimately, the school committee makes those types of decisions when you vote after that.
I think that'd be, I think it'd be helpful for the committee to see that.
See what that looks like.
See what that translates into assessment.
Sure.
And then maybe have some dialogue around that number. Maybe it's not that number. We talked about that at the last meeting. So I'm throwing it out there because I want it all eliminated, but I'm willing to listen to what the dialogue of the committee has to say, as always. Just out of curiosity, and if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Ashley a question, and not to put you on the spot. If you can't answer and aren't comfortable, that's fine. What's your total budget in town, and how much E and D do you have?
So we don't have E and D. But, yeah.
There are towns.
I'm not regional currently. The total recommended budget right now is 40 million.
And what's the size of your district?
It's pretty comparable to here. It's 2,100 students.
Are we 28?
And is your budget for next year, that's this year's current budget.
That's for FY '19.
Yeah, what's the increase? Oh, that's 19. What's your increase? What's your percentage increase?
It's a little over 2%.
Thank you.
2%. Thank you.
Derek, we'll prepare two new assessments. One, because we'll be adding some amount of money to cover collective bargaining.
Yep.
And then a second one that will remove the 375.
And if you don't mind, I'd like a third, and that would be, and I think it's pretty simple, that would be to leave the assessment where it is now and back into that choice number.
I'm not sure what you mean.
Without the special revolving fund. Because right now, the revolving fund falls instead of that, that the increased assessment...
The 250 that's left in stabilization is part of the assessment of the bottom line.
Right. Remove that in its entirety and work the school choice number so that the percentage increase remains what it is.
Is reflective of the 125.
Right. What remains what it is right now.
Okay.
That's three scenarios you're looking for.
So for purposes of...
The third, one scenario is what it has to be already, Gina, for me to vote. So that's really just, the other two scenarios are removing school choice in total and seeing what the assessments turn out to be, and then the third, the third or second is saying, the increased assessment is X, how do we back into the school choice number, removing the revolving loan funds?
Okay.
Not revolving, the revolving, special ed revolving account.
So just unless the chair, vice chair feels differently, I will not present those scenarios as part of the public presentation. I'll provide that to the committee. I just think it could create some confusion.
Absolutely, I agree.
So I'll present...
Yeah, no, that's internal at this point.
I'll present the assessment as it, as you basically have the information as it is right now, minus some adjustments within that Mr. Baker and I will take care of. We will then be able to also, at the same time, supply the committee with those additional scenarios. We can do any scenario, right? I know at one time, Mr. Owen looked at level funding, school choice, for example, and that we could take 75 out, show what the impact is there. That's the conversation you'll have after my budget hearing, right?
Yep.
Right up to that April 25 vote type of scenario, and we can do that. And certainly make sure you have it available.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay. Oh, the vocals. Yeah, go ahead.
Going back on the facilities, in the last update, there was damage done to the maintenance barn.
Yeah.
Is that part of the insurance claims that we filed?
Yes, it is. Yeah, the insurance claim is fairly comprehensive because we looked at, we hadn't finished the claim for the first storm when we had the second storm, so the adjuster agreed that we could combine it all together, which is great because then we only get hit with one deductible. So we filed it all together. There's a number of things in there, including the motor for the pool and a few other things.
But that is, that was one of our shortlists today, and I had the conversation, as you know, if you look where I park my vehicle, and you know the barn is right there, so we, that was part of the conversation. Included, if you recall, the freezer, though, the food lost, so all those things had to be included.
Yeah, some roof leaks, some leaks through the walls.
$5,000 deductible.
Yeah.
That'll cover the food in the freezer.
Yeah, we lost $5,000 worth of food, which you're right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
But that, but that specifically was included.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the vocal student survey participation.
So Dr. Correa provided, and I certainly am prepared to speak, and perhaps since we had actually placed this on the agenda before the state made it a little, somewhat of an interesting conversation this week, because they released the previous year's results after they had determined they would not do so, which provides you some additional information in relation to your direction for this coming year. I've probably given you more information than you need. It was really just some timelines. Last year, this committee chose one of the few districts, I say few, but in comparison percentage-wise, to have our students not participate. I have shared that position with the leadership team. I don't really think there's much objection, quite frankly, but it's obviously up to the school committee's prerogative to make a determination, and I think tonight would be an appropriate time because we're getting into that assessment stage. So last year, you took formal action to direct us to have our students not participate. I don't really have any editorials. I think last year, I was a little bit more in support of having our students engage in the process, but it was also the guys that the state had initially said that you would not, the information would not be publicly released.
And there you go.
Not only have they released it, they've actually rated school districts and schools based on those results, so counter to what they had provided. So I, I'm not... So my recommendation for this year is maybe a little different than last year. Last year, I was a little bit more trying to encourage this group or recommend to this group to allow our students to participate. I'll refrain from that recommendation this year prior to you taking action.
Duly noted. Now, I'm sure we have commentary.
Go right to a motion.
You want to go right to a motion?
Yeah, you can ask.
You know, it's voluntary, it's voluntary.
It is, it is absolutely voluntary.
30% of the school systems, the school districts, statewide, did not participate last year, so we weren't terribly the minority. No, no.
And it's going to be very interesting to see what the percentage is this year based on.
It's the publicizing of the information that's disturbing, because we were misled. Steve?
I'll make a motion for us not to participate.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're not participating. Thank you, Steve.
There's no, just, and just so this group knows, there's no formal action. You don't report to the state your vote. You simply, I simply instruct the principals to not...
Can we send the video to the...
With the flowers?
Da, da.
No, I...
Duly noted. This was an expected response from my, and the principals were anticipating.
We have the second reading of the calendar.
It'd be my recommendation, typically a second reading. I think it's important at this time of year that we try to get the information out as soon as possible. I do know families, and people start already taking a look at the start of school especially, but even for school vacation purposes, start planning, so it would be my recommendation to support the calendar as presented.
We do have election day in here. That was my only question.
In April, we do.
No, I meant the 18 elections.
November.
It's November, so it'd be the first Tuesday, which is the sixth. That's my only problem.
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, we had, we have one school that's impacted by the election from the site piece, and then simply we just increase our presence, security presence And then simply we just increase our presence, security presence during that timeframe.
When we put calendars together, we do need to be cognizant of that because the school, from the get-go, from when we put the addition on, said, we want to be able to segregate that part, but that means the kids can't be in there at all. And that means some activities are curtailed. It's the security thing. I know the multiple administrations, I know the teachers feel better when we don't have people roaming. I just want us to be cognizant of that and to make sure that we have that conversation with the town clerk because they have to...
Yeah, we actually are up against it. Just so the group knows, I mean, the first week of school is an election.
I know.
In September, and we have it in school, and they recommended that there not be school wise. Well, I understand that and I respect that, but on the other hand...
Well, now we've got two.
And the April piece, we have left that as the Monday, which we have coming up again for spring. So the only adjustment, I mean, we presented this a couple of times, would be to change that November thirteenth to November sixth.
Well, I think...
There was a PD day. I think at the time, we were trying to avoid the disruption of multiple weeks. You never have it, so that was the intent behind the thirteenth timeframe. When you start to separate it Tuesday, Monday becomes challenging, attendance isn't always the best. I completely understand. I mean, it's ultimately a prerogative how you want to move on.
Just the kind of thing that I wish that before we do this, we have conversations with the community on it because they do have strong feelings about elections. And now all three precincts go there.
Yeah, I will say the one thing I would say, Jean, and I had a conversation with the police chief, I think there is a much... I would say a heightened awareness to their willingness to work with us to provide some additional protections in light of what's happened. In the past, we've had issues with them providing some additional supports. And we certainly can restrict, you know, within the building, but also getting police on site, so.
Well, I'm uncomfortable with it, but I heard a motion.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Did I have a second?
No, second.
I'll say second.
Any discussion? I am not in favor of this, so I will be voting against it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Me. Any abstentions? Okay.
So I'll include that calendar with the superintendent's corner this week.
Yep.
So the information gets out there. And I'll follow up, Jean, to your point. I'll certainly follow up with the town.
Yeah, I mean, we do need to do that. They've just been around too long to know that that is an important issue for the community.
Yeah, I mean, I will say the one piece which is a struggle, I think we've built a... I think we're doing more and more, and I'll just give you an example. The town called up Friday with their Easter egg hunt, and they had no facility in sight. And so we've opened it up, the elementary school, and the town administration was thrilled by that. I'm not saying it negates that, the election piece. But I mean, we are having a lot of dialogue with both towns in relation to opening our facilities and sites.
That's a good thing, and we want to continue that, and I'm happy that we're moving in that direction. On this issue, in and of itself, that's always just been a bone of contention, and we need to do... I just wanted the dialogue in advance. Yes?
I think there's several areas of the calendar that people could say that about the bone of contention. And we were going to send out a survey, and this group decided not to do it. So I think if the group, the administration has a conversation with the principal and the chief of police, and then...
Well, and the town clerk is part of that discussion.
However that is, you know, I think that's a fair thing because, you know, we do the April. I'd say we open that up whether we need to do it on any election day. But to your point about it's a bone of contention with the community, you could say that about several different things in this calendar.
No, I think this one is more a security issue. It's not, do we go to school on Good Friday or not? This is, they've always been cautious when it comes to security. And there are ways to make sure that it's a secure facility, and they did it before. I'm just saying that historically, that's been a problem, and I just have asked in the past and will continue to ask that we work with the town in advance of establishing a calendar so that we can try to avoid that. That's all. Sometimes you can't. Stuff happens. Okay, so we have the district grant manual.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? This is good to have.
The next item is, I hope, as straightforward. Each year, you have to annually designate individuals, typically the superintendent in each district. We are members of two separate collaboratives. South Coast Educational Collaborative and REEDS Collaborative, and you'll see both votes. My recommendation would be to accept both votes and designate superintendent as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Do we have to read them? Good.
Did you make sure you buy more flowers for this?
Yes, Derek.
I have a quick question on the use of the collaboratives. Does your involvement in the collaboratives require us to use the services of those collaboratives?
There are some, the South Coast answer is no. For REEDS, there is a very small monetary commitment that you make to clinician-type of spots and locations, which we've always absorbed and used. So there is an identification. It's not a membership fee to that extent.
No, what I'm asking is whether we've compared the services and the cost of services of different collaboratives? And if being part of that collaborative prohibits us from doing so.
Yeah, I can't say that I have participated in that, looking beyond. I mean, typically, you're looking at collaboratives within logistic, you know, you're looking at proximity. So other than maybe SMEC, there aren't many district piece. BIC goes a little bit further out. In other words, our kids would be traveling a distance.
Well, quite frankly, you mentioned it, and that's why I ask, because SMEC is right there. So I was wondering what those services were compared to ours.
To do that, yeah. So we would have, so two things would have to happen. We would have to initiate conversation with them, or SMEC would, you know, look out to bring them. We haven't done either of those things, I'll be honest with you. Certainly worth us exploring, especially where they are relative to the coast as well.
Yeah, I think it probably is.
What I will say is that we do receive services from SMEC specifically and are not charged an out-of-district fee for those. So we're not penalized for not being members. Could we have greater access to that potentially? It's worth something probably that we could take a look at.
We also receive services from the tech collaborative, which is quite away from here. But we're part of a cooperative bidding arrangement with them, which does save us some time and money.
Yeah.
We're not charged a fee for that.
I think in what I'm trying to get at in a nutshell is, I don't want to be tied to something in the event that we were in current addition... Or let me say, a premium because we are associated with them, yeah.
It's definitely worth exploring.
Yeah.
Jean, I would just need to be sure that I have your signatures in both of those documents in the middle of the day.
See, I don't like the calendar. Yes, you will get that. So we have reports.
No, we need to poll.
I'm sorry, you need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And we'll get that information. So because we're in budget, we're not having Dr. Correa or Ms. Harrington report out, but we have their reports. And if anyone has any questions or concerns, there's one over there. Yes?
Related to Dr. Harrington or Ms. Harrington, the roundtable discussion? We talked about it, that we were going to get a, here's what we discussed last year, the action items, and here's where they're at. I see some of what we talked about this year, but I don't see the report on...
You don't see the comparison from last year.
Yeah, I think she refrained because she wanted to be present when you had that information. So I think that's her intent. It may get to get pushed back if you think about our April fourth to the twenty-fifth of April meeting. But I believe that's her intent, and I'll be sure to follow up with her.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate with what Steve said just a little bit. Even with other things in the district, I'd like to see, you know, same thing we kind of do with the agenda. It rolls, and until some point where something is gone, it's gone. But I'd like to see, you know, at least we do this in the business world, short-term, long-term kind of action items that come out of that. What gets implemented, what doesn't. It would help the committee to see, you know, what was the result of it. Was it just a roundtable, and we had coffee and donuts, and, you know, and I know that that's not the case. But it certainly helps us to put some value to what we're trying to do.
Agreed, absolutely. And do you have anything to add?
Mr. Baker does have a question.
Just on the special ed transportation. We have always had, or at least for the last ten or fifteen years, a mix of special ed students who go out of district or who go someplace else in the district and need a wheelchair van or a vehicle because they have to be, for whatever reason, transported at different times or by themselves. We've always had a mix of doing it with outside vendors, but primarily have done it with inside vendors, with our own vehicles. So we presently have eighteen routings. Some of them go more than one place and everything, but there basically are eighteen vehicles that service us. We are in, we also have service from South Coast Collaborative for a couple of routes. And we have service from one other company who does our temporary transportation where there's a provision in the Mass Law where if a child is temporarily assigned to us, we have to transport them in the meantime. Most of them are two- and three-week assignments, and we do get, for the most part, reimbursed by, for it. We have been working with a special ed vendor, and we believe we can save, in the long term, the replacement cost of vehicles, and can it possibly save on the short term, but can at least break even. The issue is that we can't, under the present situation, replace the vehicles at a rate that keeps the mileage off. We're running now vehicles anywhere from seventy to two-hundred-and-seventy thousand miles on them. Now, they do pass inspection. The registry inspection's tough, and, you know, but, you know, some of them are coming to the end of their line. And they've become expensive to fix. So we're going to come in with a recommendation with specifics in it, probably to contract out about ten of the routes that we're now doing internally. We're going to, for the most part, keep all of the ones around town. We're going to keep the wheelchair ones. Keep, obviously, the vehicles that do not have that many miles and that have a good maintenance record. But we want to contract out the other routes. So I will have the specifics for you probably relatively soon. We're meeting with the vendor for the third time on Wednesday.
Is that going to be a long-term contract, like a three-year with options? How does that work as a rule?
It will be a three-year contract, but, you know, we'll, as in the big bus contract, have the ability to have more or less vehicles. But we'll have a contracted rate for vehicles. So if, you know, if we have three less kids next year or two more kids, we can deal with it.
You can adjust it, okay.
Yeah.
That doesn't have to go up to bid?
No. Special ed transportation is exempt from the bid laws, probably because so much of it is very much individualized service. And, but it is exempt from the bid laws.
I have two other questions. One, any cost savings is not already built into the budget, correct? Yes or no?
Right, the budget continues the operation as it is.
As it stands, okay.
If we can come up with short-term savings, that would be obviously an advantage.
And this new contract, no matter what the length, will allow you to evaluate a particular route, whether we want to maintain it or outsource it? Is that what you mean by that?
Yeah, we choose, you know, we determine the routes in combining kids. There is one other advantage in this, and that's that because the company is large and has other towns. There may be, and it's probably not going to happen a whole lot, but there may be times where we could combine with a child from Middleborough who might, or a neighboring town who is going to the same place. A lot of times, it doesn't work because both towns are so big. But occasionally, you can make that work and save some money and split the fee.
Sorry, one last question. Historically speaking, what is the impact to the transportation time?
Well, there's no reason we shouldn't do as well. I mean, we're...
Got it, so there's no...
We're picking the child up at their house, which, you know...
Yeah, we're talking the same sites. Yeah, the expectation would be, this should not be a time issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, any combinations we try to do, if, you know, if they cause time problems, we wouldn't do them.
Got it, thank you.
This has been a discussion that's gone on for years in terms of also the economies you can build by trying to combine some kids.
For the obvious reasons, more and more districts are moving out of the special education transportation and looking towards vendor. I think the blend that Fred's been working on with Ellen and Ashley will inherit is kind of the best scenario right now. It models still keeping some close-to-home type of routes. We do use the collaborative. We'll continue to use the collaborative where we are placing students in the collaborative. So we have a couple of unique situations there. And then bringing, you know, a vendor in to take a look at that, and we'll be able to take a look at that annually. I do think, long-term, we'll see some, I'd like to think some significant savings. Short-term, we're also hoping that to be the case. End of the day, to Steve's point, even like on time, we want to be sure that we're still supplying the same level of service for these kids. And so driver, for example...
Absolutely, but you also don't want to have all that fleet maintenance responsibility. I mean, that's what gets you into...
Yeah, that's the real issue.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, quick. So we're going to hold some of the better vehicles, let's say, to manage our own routes.
Right.
The intent is, those are going to get old at some point, too. Are we going to look at this at some point and decide, hey, this is, we're not in the business of this at all? Is that where we're heading? Or at least, I'm not saying we're going to go there, but I'm saying it's going to be reviewed.
I mean, I think if we only have a few vehicles and run a few, you know, it might be economical to, you know, replace a vehicle every year, especially if we can save on the other part of it. Right now, we got too many that are too old, and it's not...
Derek, I think I can answer that. Mr. Baker's not necessarily going to have to address that issue, no. I think the long-range plan really needs to revisit the fact of maintaining and keeping any sort of inventory as it relates to transportation. I mean, we do have a circumstance where you could have one or two vans, though, that can provide use...
You should.
For multi tasks.
Yeah. I just think being open to the idea, I mean, those people are in the business. That's what they do.
Oh, yeah.
No one does it better than them. I mean, so I'd like to be open to the idea that, yeah, you know, there may be a possibility that, you know, our self-management transportation system is phased out. I'm not saying it will be, but it should be open for discussion.
But this is incremental. It allows us to see how we do, and I like that approach. I think we probably all do. Instead of just taking the big deep dive, you're going in.
Yeah, and some of that dive would be at a loss over what we're doing. I mean, we do believe we can do the in-town ones.
Okay, and keep the good ones in the wheelchair vans for now, right? Okay.
Correct.
Well, thank you for that. So subcommittee updates?
My evaluation's ongoing. We're in the process. We'll have to schedule something, but it is an intent to have something mid-year to kind of have the subgroup look at. And ultimately, an evaluation, just kind of on the horizon, superintendent evaluation should probably, you should probably take a look at that towards June.
Well, yeah, I was thinking that we'd meet in May with the group. Right, okay. Policy, you guys met tonight?
Yeah, so two quick, call them housekeeping. One, we approved the district grant manual. So it's appropriate that it's in section DIE, our fiscal responsibilities, but...
DIE? That's not appropriate.
All right, we live and die, no pun intended.
So where you approved that manual, there's a policy that reflects that change.
So in this particular section, we just wanted to add the section to reference that district manual. So I'll put a motion forward to add a reference in this particular section to the district grant manual.
There was a policy that came through, I saw. That's the next one?
That's coming next.
Oh, good. Never mind.
We're getting there.
So we would need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Any discussion?
Do we have a second?
We have to have a second.
Yeah, we have a second.
Oh, I didn't hear it, sorry about that, Bob.
Well, I heard Bob, loud and clear.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
The second.
Any abstentions?
That was me, sorry. I'll wait.
No, I'm all set.
Okay, second piece was to be in compliance with the Pregnancy Fairness Act.
That was the one.
That Jean had forwarded over. There's an April first compliance date, but essentially what we need to do is add pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition to the protected classes in a number of different sections of the policy manuals. There are five different sections. So a motion to update those protective classes in those sections to include pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions.
And that's for staff, students, everybody.
Exactly, so that'll be to be in compliance for the April first date.
Why did that just come out, though?
Well, we've had the information, so we are in compliance with procedures and policies.
This was just a reminder that you needed to...
That actually the policies themselves were being followed.
So the motion is to... Thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Regional FinCon?
No update.
No update. Any other business that may properly come forth that we have?
The only item, Mrs. Fox, I would just want to add, it was at your place. It's pretty significant and a big event. On April fifth, at the state, as part of the state's lead the nation, our high school is being recognized as a commendation school. I think I provided at your place the letter that was... I provided at your place the letter that was sent to Principal Starkey. We do have a great representation from the high school. I've offered, although I did receive a CC and could have been invited and attended what I think is going to be an exceptional event. It's actually the first event that the new commissioner is also going to be recognized and presented. But in lieu of my attendance, I'm a high school administrator for the day. I thought it was important to have the high school team, administrative team, and a collection of that be present. So, both Dr. Correa and I have offered our services to stay here and help out at the high school. So, in fact, both assistant principals will attend, the principal, guidance counselor, and both content coordinators for the specific areas in math and English language arts. I thought that they deserved that recognition and presence, and although I would love to be up at the State House for the event, I'd like to, I also wanted those folks who I think were deserving of that. So, I just want to make you folks aware, it's not that the central office didn't want to be present, but we thought it was appropriate that the high school have that. I know, I reached out to Dr. Starkey. She was thrilled because she obviously was thinking she was going to divide and kind of make an accomplishment. So, I believe there are seven individuals from the high school that are going to attend this event. I did share this with the committee. I do know at least one school committee member who works in the city. And so, it is an open, it is an open invitation. I know the deadline was the 23rd. I have confirmed that if there are school committee members after the fact that want, obviously, you know the location, pretty big venue. So, I can't imagine that they would be too upset if there were school committee. The difficult challenge is obviously the timing for you folks is kind of challenging.
Yeah, well, I'm going to be in the city anyway. I think it's a wonderful thing. I can't wait to be with the team.
I did share with Dr. Starkey that I believe the chair of the school committee was going to make every effort to be over there.
Oh, I'm barging right in. Yep.
And so, local politicians will be there. So, it's a pretty significant event. They're really celebrating. So, I just wanted to make sure you folks are aware. I'm going to hopefully get some pictures through that, through the group that's going, and then, you know, through the superintendent's corner and website, share some of those.
A lot of, I'll send you pictures, too. And then, I was up for a legislative briefing last week, and Senator Roderick says, you know, Free County Middle School's down there in the nurses' hall? I had no idea.
It was Tuesday.
It was great. It was great. So, I popped in and had pizza.
She had some of those photos, and we actually already have them up on the website.
Oh, good. I haven't been there. So, now we have.
Is there a way we can get anything like this in the newspaper or a picture in the newspaper?
No, we definitely will. We'll write a release or I will draft something. We'll get something. That's how it happens.
Yes, that, New Bedford Santas typically will.
They're pretty good. They like, they have an education page on, I think, Tuesday.
I'll reach out to Dr. Starkey as well.
She's even better. Yeah. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you for taking help before them, too.
Yeah, he's going to be principal for a day. That ought to be fun.
Fred's responsible for uniform and fraction.
Fred doesn't know he's one of the, he's the dean of students on that day, too. He didn't realize that.
I never, superintendent thought that.
That's great.
Okay, we can do that. Ashley doesn't know she sent, no.
So, now, we do have an executive session, and we're not coming back into open session. This is where Will is going to update us. So, I need a motion to go into executive session and not return to open session for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for upcoming negotiations with collective bargaining units.
I have a second, Bob.
All right, so we have to.
Do you want the roll call?
Roll call.
Jean Fox?